Evening, we're, uh, wanted to give you a little bit of an update and then discuss the, uh...
Are you sure? I wanted to see if you showed before this.
She does the most entertaining part in these meetings.
It's been a couple of months since we've been here to give you a report, so I thought we'd start with that. Um, over the last, uh, three or, three or so months, a lot has happened. Uh, SMP finished up all their design work, got their complete package of, uh, drawings and specifications to Balin. Uh, we had a meeting in, as a committee in January to review all that as the final designs. And then Balin sent that out, uh, for bids. The bids closed in the middle of February, and we've had two meetings with Balin to review all those bids for all the subcontractors. Uh, the good news is, uh, we got a lot of bids back, especially for some of the larger things like the electrical, mechanical. Uh, we had four for electrical and I think six for the mechanical, uh, which is good. Some of the other trades, we didn't see quite as many, uh, but I think in almost every case, we had multiple bids. And, uh, we're, we worked through a lot of the detail of that, you know, with Balin. Uh, they have experience working with a lot of the, the companies that, uh, did bid, you know, so they were able to share that experience with us and help us, you know, understand the recommendation that they made in each of the, in each of the cases. In almost every case, we went with either the lowest bid or the second lowest bidder, I think. Uh, we met last Wednesday and finalized some of the changes for, there was some clarifications that were needed, and put it all together, and at this point, we are pretty much on budget. We're actually a little bit under, maybe about one and a half percent under. Uh, but we know it's gonna be a challenge because material prices are definitely increasing right now, you know, on certain things, and some prices will be locked in. Uh, there is a contin- continuity in the construction budget, but it's not huge. So, uh, I think we feel pretty, pretty comfortable where we're at right now. Uh, Balin's schedule shows us starting construction about the middle of April, so that's right around the corner. And we're pretty excited about that. And at this point, um, we need to enter into the addendum on their contract, which locks in the guaranteed maximum price of the project. And that is shown on that, on that addendum, and if, remember, there's two parts to the budget. There's the overall project budget, contains the owner's budget and the construction budget. And the owner's budget includes things like, uh, furniture, phone systems, computers, uh, security system, all those kinds of things that are not divided by, by Balin as part of their contract. Uh, we had some things in the owner's budget that were shifted over to the construction budget, like the sister, uh, which is a good thing, because then Balin will, will keep right on top of that. Uh, so there've been some changes, but overall, I think it looks pretty good. So, with that, take any questions you have.
What we were trying to figure out just now, um, we sent the addendum to, uh, Sumner for review, and he mentioned he never got to see what was signed. And we were trying to discuss between us, we signed with them, but, um, I meant with the Sumner for us in Primex, and I thought we fixed some stuff, but there was some stuff we didn't.
That's correct. Most of the stuff, um, it was back and forth, there was, there was a lot of, I would say, clarification on how, on the payment. Remember that whole conversation that it, uh, Sumner was kind of stuck on how the invoices got paid? Uh, we, we talked through all that, that SMP kind of signs off, a committee hears, it's the chief and, uh, the chief, but acting as the board of selectmen, and then there's probably one other person that will sign off, as well as, uh, Balin. So he gives us a progress report on a monthly basis on how we're doing on concrete, how we're doing on steel, right? So we don't have to pay, we only are paying for what's completed. Uh, so really, that was a kind of contentious there, but we worked through that. And then the other stuff was all Primex, he pretty much turned it. Uh, Primex came back, I had a couple of meetings with Holly at Primex. Most of the stuff, your, your, your point is right on, most of the stuff was in there, but there was some stuff that, uh, Balin said, nope, can't do it, you know, we have to go back and change this whole thing, so... That's, that's where we stood, and that's what we signed. Most accountants was in there, most of Primex.
I think it's part of, part of Sumner's confidence, based on him not truly understanding construction management. You know, and Balin's working for the town. You know, they're not, they're not an adversarial relationship like you are with a general contractor. And between Balin and SMP and our team, there's gotta be people looking at every invoice that's submitted to make sure that the work is done, and, and expecting, I think that was part of his, his concern.
Yeah.
Right, this original one was signed on ten eighteen nineteen, that was the original contract that was sent up to be reviewed.
And, and really, the only difference is in that contract, it was a rough estimate, this is a guaranteed build price.
Right. That's all listed in here, that's based upon what we sat down and did for the last couple of meetings.
Awarded steel, awarded wood, awarded windows, awarded concrete, that's all been awarded. Uh, this really, in signing this, puts it back on Balin to stop the agreements, to get purchase orders working and...
Yes, I need to speak up, son, because Ellie, Zoom, people can't hear you if you're not talking aloud.
There's still the retention of ten percent?
Uh, five, so on the payments, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what, the final? Yeah, so we hold, as an example, we'll get fifteen invoices from April on, right? That's how long it's gonna take us to build that. We actually have a five percent retention in there, so as we, we hold back, and there, I actually have a sample invoice from, was actually the last one from the library. So we hold back five percent from that payment. He tells us what the number is. As the project progresses, uh, he'll come to us and say, you know what, this contractor's done. Be it the window guy, windows are all in, we agree, they're in well, um, so we, we can release some of that retention money. But, you know, kind of worst case, at the end of this project, you have three months of retainage, uh, held for the checklists and making sure everything works and things like that, aside from the warranties that come with all the, the mechanical and electrical stuff.
So the final, it's five percent retainage or ten percent?
Five percent.
Okay.
So Jason, with the conversation we had with that, right?
Yeah, with SMP, he said ten percent.
Ten percent.
Five percent's pretty normal.
Yeah, five percent retention.
Who, you want that Jeff Park?
Yes, Jeff Park.
Jeff.
Um, Jeff, do you have a question about the percent of retainage?
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's, as Kenton mentioned, it's five percent retainage throughout the whole project. Some projects, and Anthony can pipe in, so, some projects are ten percent until the job is fifty percent done, then it reduces down to five and some's released. It's the same thing at, at the end, you're holding five percent.
We're holding five?
Yeah. As Kenton also mentioned, like, for instance, the site work and the concrete, um, concrete's probably gonna be done by, let's say, August first. Come November, we should release the retainage to the concrete contractors because they're done, concrete's set, there's no problems. No sense in holding their retainage until like May of the following year. And that's what we would typically do, some of those early guys, let's pay their retainage after a few months.
So essentially, we, what we voted on at the meetings for the, on the subcontractors, and that's what we're going to be looking at here for the guaranteed maximum price.
Correct.
Maximum. So that's what you're asking the board to sign tonight, is this agreement for the guaranteed maximum price that we would pay for any of these items in the list?
Yes. For the construction.
Build the building.
Yeah, for the construction of the building. How did you say, also, did you ask for contracts and, uh... We didn't get a lot. Um, it, it was a little discouraging. Uh, I think what you'll find is on a lot of the, the bigger, the mechanical systems, it was too big. Uh, we got a lot of no quotes. Uh, we're still, you know, there were some painting people that came in, say, hey, you know, I can paint it, it's a one-man show, and between the discussions with Jeff, he's like, you know, we need this thing painted, and we need seven guys coming in here spraying it and everything. So we, we did have those discussions. Um, we do have some locals, uh, Joey Wilson got the concrete, uh, company out of Exeter got the doors, uh, so we do... But the big stuff, I'll say plumbing, HVAC, came out of Manchester.
And there's still some small items that he doesn't have subs for yet, for some, uh...
Site workers.
Oh, oh, great.
Site workers, vines, out of Kymstock.
Black lines, black lines with the site workers.
So it was good.
They were my customer for ten years.
So those, those meetings we talked in, every, we got a good, the committee made a decision based upon, they knew some of the people before, rec- recommended some over the others, based upon the quality of work and that guarantee that they're gonna stand behind, so it was a lengthy process to weed through, who they thought were going to be the best people to, to build them.
Correct.
Any questions, you guys?
Make a motion now. I'd like to make a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment, and authorize to be, the chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second, man.
Okay, got a motion in a second, further discussion?
The other thing I'd say, I understand what Sumner was talking about, but I thought we already hashed most of the stuff out, and as I said, this is just the guaranteed price, there's nothing changing.
From the, from the basic contract, is that a question?
Right.
Ellie, you got anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
I'm staying.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes. I'm staying for anything I sign.
Did they have any questions?
Nope, they were there for you.
Well, it's nice that they were there for us, you know?
We got a shower, we got a shower curtain, SMP.
Yes, right, they promised that shower curtain.
Better get more than a shower curtain. Just saying.
The other thing that we wanted to get some feedback on is, um, we talked about it last fall, we really haven't talked about it since then, about trying to have some sort of groundbreaking. You know, it's been a little bit difficult to think about, a big ceremony with a current tradition, but, uh, it's about a month from now, we'll be, we'll be moving.
Yeah. I think we just did the thing for, for Rich's field, and, and outside, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it'd be, you know...
If people are spending a lot of money on this, we might as well, uh, table something.
Yep, sorry.
All right, let him take a break.
We're working on that, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. That is all we have for appointments, and for our first public comments section. Members of the public comments.
They were told to come in on their business, but maybe they're coming out soon.
How we doing?
Good, all right.
You're welcome.
Can you just identify yourself for the people?
Adam Carlson, owner, operator, Giant Construction.
I'm sorry, owner of what?
Giant Construction, over here on Main Street. Uh, I received a letter, um, that you guys all signed, for a cease and desist, uh, running my company. My company is, is, I guess, looked at being run out of my home, and it's not a company being run out of my home, I park my trucks in my trailers at the house, but I'm a six AM guy, I get up and I drive out the driveway. The fact that I received a cease and desist, not only for my equipment, but for my vehicles, is, if you ask me, a, a, just a horrible, horrible thing to do to somebody who's a small business owner here in town, and it looks like we're levying to one person on the street who has a big mouth and likes to complain a lot. I'm looking at pictures, I'm looking at pictures of my front, the front of my house, which are taken from his driver. And you, you all have looked at, and, and look at this, this mess where it looks horrible right now because I was moving my trucks around in my yard, but usually it's very well kept. The winter's a little bit more difficult for me, just because it's winter and I have to plow, and it becomes a muddy mess, but every year I clean up my property, it looks great every spring. And I just, I, I feel like a cease and desist order for me to stop running my business out of my home is uncalled for. And I don't know what my options are, are, are to overturn this or to change this, or what my, what I can do as a business owner here in town.
So I think he has to go to the planning board.
Well, so, the first thing is, you're in the single-family residential area.
Okay.
So there is a provision to have a, um, basically a minor provision, if you're, say, a tool salesman and you have a big tool truck, and you're parking it at your house, because that's the business, you're on the road, you have one lettered up truck, that's allowed to be parked in front of your house. That's pretty much all the provision is for the single-family residential area.
To have one vehicle, that state, that state is all, like, you know, one, one-letter vehicle?
I do not have the regulation in front of me, but that's pretty much, that's the Reader's Digest version of how it's, it's written up. Um, so, that was not just one complaint we got on that.
I'm sure you've gotten a hundred from one person.
Not from one person, from multiple people, multiple complaints from multiple people. And we don't typically act on complaints unless there is someone actually assigning their name to it. That being said, um, you know, what we saw there was numerous lettered up trucks, a trailer that was lettered up, um, you know, snow removal equipment stored there. So we sent that letter to the property owner because of that, because it was, we consulted with the planning board, they felt it was in violation of that ordinance, and so we're the enforcement arm for the town, and so that's why we sent it out. Um, you do have the option to go to the planning board or the zoning board, just...
I mean, I don't, I don't have a choice not to. I mean, I am running a business and I'm not gonna shut down, I just, there's gotta be somebody...
I mean, we're not saying you have to shut down, we're just saying you can't operate in the single-family residential area.
Not operating.
As per the ordinance, because you have multiple vehicles...
So you're telling me that I'm allowed to park one vehicle at my property?
And I, I, I mean, we can get you the ordinance and send it to you so you can review it, if there's questions, we can certainly, you know, go over with you, but yeah, that's essentially...
I mean, that's all I have is work vehicles, that, that's all I own, I mean, I have, I have a work truck, I mean, I drive my bicycle or my motorcycle down to a shop, but I have to now rent to, to park my vehicles at. I mean, on this, on this letter, it states that all equipment and vehicles need to be pushed off-site. I mean, all those trucks are lettered, are just lettered vehicles, they're, they're licensed to me, to Adam Carlson. I could pull the lettering off and the same thing. I mean, if you make everybody feel better, I can go get fifty cars next week, and I'll park them all up front, put them, uh, put a sticker on them.
As long as they're all registered and inspected, I think that's legal, but...
It's sad that that's the case, I mean, there's gotta be gray area between there, that I'm not a disruption to the town, I'm not.
I mean, the ordinance is pretty specific on what is allowed, and it's basically, in the single-family residential, it allows someone with a lettered up truck who's kind of on, that's kind of just the, the gist of the provision, you know? Uh, and that's something the town passed years ago.
It's, it's basically set it to be an invisible business, and they allowed one-letter trucks.
So knitting in the house, that's okay, but because of building houses, it's, it's not, I need vehicles to, to do so.
Well, the, the reason they allow one-letter truck is that you may work for Essex County Gas and drive a truck on them, so that's why they allow one truck, you basically leave every day and go to work. When I went by the property after this came in, there was building material on the side of the garage...
It was, it's winter, though, I mean, it's, it literally has just thawed out last week, and I'm getting rid of all that stuff.
But it shouldn't have been put there, is the point, that it's, it's something that no one should have to look at. And people consider this the main draft of town, we've gotten a lot of comments, a lot of complaints.
This is Kingston, says a random person, I mean, it's, it's not a ritzy neighborhood, I mean, who cares? It's a piece of wood in my, in front of my property, it's an embarrassment that I have to move it, total embarrassment.
Well, we're not a ritzy neighborhood, but we do have rules, and that's one item that's in place, and, and we're charged with enforcing that rule. Again, I mean, there is provisions with the ordinance, you can go to the zoning board. I believe they'd have to go to the zoning first, right, because it's a type, I, I don't know whether it's ordinance or...
I think they have to be turned down by the planning board before they can go to the zoning board.
But can I request that this pushed back a couple of weeks for me, because a lot of that stuff that I'm being asked to move, again, was under snowbank until yesterday? I mean, I'll get it all out of there, we're gonna dumpster there this week, and I'll, I'll move everything offsite, I just, I don't wanna start getting hit with a fine every day, because everything was under a snowbank, the only way to get up would be by jackhammer. It was wood, it was just wet, soaked in.
How long will you...
Give me, give me a week and a half, till next week, and I'll, I'll have it all out of there.
Okay, we'll send you, we'll send an updated one with the two-week deadline extension on that?
Yeah. So the other thing you wanna do is get in contact with, uh, I believe they have a form for that too, today. So see, maybe Alan, Clark?
Who is it?
With planning.
Alan with, with planning?
Alan with planning.
Okay.
Uh, and there's a form that you fill out to get permission to park the vehicle, the commercial vehicle, uh, on the property, and then they just bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, what, what will probably happen is he'll file that, that one, and she'll bring it up at the next meeting. More than likely, they'll say they want him to come in and set up a time to come in and talk about it.
So what happens if he comes in on the same evening?
If he what?
You, will they tell him in advance?
Yeah.
To come in on that evening, the night of the...
And he'll have to notify others and the whole process, you know, if it gets to the point of a year. And it'll have to be the propium or the desert, not you.
Understood.
So, I mean, you can fill out everything, they just have to sign it.
Understood.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, this is something that has come up quite a bit recently, and it's...
Again, it's, it's winter, it's, it's tough, where, where it lives, I'm not...
No, it's not just you, I'm saying, there are other people that we've had to enforce this upon, and, and it's, it's... In the single-family residential, you know, like, I understand there's a business right across the street from you, but their grandfather...
I'm not bringing that up, I don't know where the line is for the residential.
Yeah, and, and there are things that were there before this ordinance, you know, was put in place, so...
That was there before the ordinance.
Yeah, so, it, it, it does cause confusion, and...
A little bit of anger.
We're willing to work with you, I mean, I don't think anyone, as long as, you know...
I'm here to play ball, I just need to know how I can run my business correctly through, through the, through the board, I mean, I, I don't wanna break any rules, but again, I, I can't just close up shop and say, okay, I retire.
Right.
I just, I need options, what I can do to make this work.
Yep, and I, you know, the planning board basically needs to know if there's a business operating in town, because there's business occupancy permits that they have to issue, and we have to track all that, and it's also a safety thing. You know, if someone calls nine-one-one and they're responding to a business, we kinda need to know the nature of what's there, so if not, hazardous chemical, and all that stuff.
Right.
Um, because we're like...
And again, it's parking, it's parking spots.
Yeah, and, and I'm saying, it's applied to, you know, you know, we're charged with enforcing the ordinance, and, and that's where we're at, but, um, we can certainly send you an updated letter adding to lease onto that, and, um, get it resolved.
Very good, uh, one last question, um, safe for argument's sake, I come home late, I'm bringing my trailer home, it's a one-night overnight thing, is that, is that considered a, a problem, a nuisance, that it's just an overnight? I mean, if I come home at ten o'clock at night, now I have to drive down to my shop, drop off a trailer, and bring back my truck, I mean, is it overnight a, a problem, I mean?
I love that you give us that much credit, but this is, uh, we're not that adaptive to, I mean, we just, it, it takes a while for us to get to this point. We, we did receive multiple complaints, and so, if it were a one-night thing, it's not something we're, we're gonna be coming after.
Is that something planning would look at too as well?
Yeah, the sign, it was out for hours, I guess, okay, that's...
I had a big sign, and I was told that that was out, out of, out of ordinary, it was not okay, and I used to lie, I got a smaller sign, and then I got, I got a smaller sign, and then there was more complaints about that, so...
I think between the sign and the building material, that probably caused the overflow of complaints for...
Just wanna make some money, that's it.
No roosters or businesses in the single-family residential area.
What's that?
No roosters or businesses.
I guess.
But, no, I mean, we're willing to work with you, and we can add two weeks onto that.
I, I appreciate it, just give me a minute to, to get all the stuff out of there, again, the frost is just leaving, thank God, so...
Absolutely.
All right, all set? Thank you.
Anthony, you have?
I guess, um, uh, Mr. Butler asked me to come, but I guess he's not here. Oh, um, is it next week? He told me...
It's next week.
He emailed me the last week and said it was today.
It was going to be, and then we changed it apparently.
He didn't update me.
It was nice sitting here.
Okay, so next week?
He wanted to make sure you were on time.
He told me we're here.
Okay, um, I know you wanted to talk to me, too.
Yeah, and I think you already started talking with, with, um, Paul, we were just trying to figure out use of magazine field if someone wanted it. And what I said was, Little League has that first right of refusal, because that's really what the field is designed for.
Yep.
Um, we'd like to see it generate something to kind of offset, we also don't wanna destroy the field either for you, so Paul, I said, needs to call you first before anyone wants to do it. But it seems like every time everyone wants to do it, has all the intensity, gotta pay, it falls to the cracks. I think we need to get money upfront from any organization, I think, ever.
That's fine, yeah, no, I, I agree with that. Um, there was one organization that asked me about it, and I've been working with them, with our league, doing clinics and those kind of things, and I asked Mr. Butler about offsetting the cost for them, because it's also gonna allow us to make money if we can get someone to the snack shack, and they would only play when we're not playing. Because the gentleman that runs the, runs that team that wants to play there is also part of the Quintown League that Sam Barnes is part of, so he knows when we have games, his teams wouldn't be able to be there, so... That was the only thing him and I had talked about a couple of weeks ago, and he said he was gonna talk to you guys about it, so... But other than that, I think it's next week, I guess. All right, I'll be back then.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry to hear about your injuries.
Oh, it's free, I didn't...
All right, anybody else on, uh, Zoom?
Uh, just Ellie and us right now, so...
All right. Well, that's a good segue into the indoor facility use form of tactics, I'll do that next week.
Yes, he's gonna come in after these are adopted, um, and, and talk to you about the different teams that are coming in.
Okay, Kevin, you wanna pick this one? What, are we, are we adopting these tonight, or are we following?
We, we hope so.
Okay. Wait a minute, we're...
But the only, the only thing is, the only thing that's really up for discussion are the fees for the fields.
Yeah, this is, I mean, with this has been extended, did, was it added, uh, there, no? It's just recreational fields.
For the fees, yeah, and there is just a big question mark there, I don't know how you wanna handle fees for, for fields if you're charging the local, I don't think you're charging Little League, but it is a for-profit team, how much do you wanna charge them?
So this applies to Cuomo as well?
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking, and I just realized that now, so... I'll make a motion to approve the revised procedure for facility, facility use application.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second, further discussion?
Are we good with the numbers? Handle the fee?
I think it's in there, we reserve the right to alter it accordingly, we talked about before, when we find it.
Is anyone talking right now?
What's that?
Is anyone talking, or are they all reading?
Oh, kind of a little of both, we're looking at the fee schedule for facilities, um, that fields, that's...
Yeah, yeah, well, well, I think the fee schedule, I think, looks good, and people still have the option of coming to the board and asking for fees to be waiveded or reduced, but I think that's, I think the schedule is pretty good.
So, I, I guess the non-Kinston nonprofit, we don't wanna have any fee on there whatsoever?
Yeah, 'cause I think it would be dependent, I think we'd have to figure out whether they'd want it for one, or they're gonna use it, you know, four Saturdays in a row.
It depends, if they're gonna use it or playing some...
Right, I think it, and...
It's gonna be a...
You know, I don't, I don't see it in here, but we had said before, we were gonna put a line in here that we have the right to, um, alter any fees accordingly, you know, like, if we wanna waive a fee or whatever we could, do we need that in this?
Well, I, I, I guess, you know me, how I love the worst-case scenario, so, we're... Well, I, I, I guess, you know me, how I love the worst case scenario, so, we're, let's say I wanna have a political rally and I see that there's no charge for non-Kingston nonprofit.
It doesn't say zero, it doesn't say zero, it's just that's to be discussed, if you wanna put that in there.
To be determined.
To be determined, TBD, you can put that down.
Yeah, I, I can, we don't wanna put it at zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be determined because they may use the whole planes from one end to the other, or it may require a number of different things, maybe highway rigs, cones, barricades. So it may be more conservative cost to the town.
Well, for the planes, it's different, cause there is a fee for the planes, but, and there is the qualification, additional fees for emergency police services and custodial. It's just on the recreation fields, um, I would put TBD on that.
I guess why I'm bringing it up is someone has, we'll go back to the political rally one, and there's six hundred people that chose Como Field and crampled crap out of it, and, and we have to spend eight hundred dollars in fertilizer and restoration, and wow, we really didn't make out on that one.
Well, that's why I think we didn't want.
The first bullet, look at your first bullet, political events above the regional campaign will be billed at the non-Kingston for-profit rate.
We have that in there about political events.
The very first bullet.
That's why I think anyone that wanted to use Como Field, stay with that, they're gonna tell us what they want it for, you know, and I think if, if it's a one-hit wonder, you know, we might say it's a hundred bucks, or, or actually, no, if you would. It, for a, it'd be like two hundred dollars, but they said, well, we want this setting, next setting, if they do win a softball game for, you know, cystic fibrosis. We might say, well, two hundred bucks will cover you for both weekends or something.
Is it in there that we have the right to change any of these fees?
I think, I, it doesn't really put your buyer in there, but I think what he's asking is these blank spots, put TBD.
TBD, or I would just put a line in there that states the recreational fields are active sports.
At least you gotta comment.
Specifically, I guess.
Look at the bullets again, gentlemen, next to the last one says final approval for all events resides with the select board.
Right, what I'm saying is, for the recreational fields, we need to specify, cause, okay, we'll say the Vintage Bazaar is coming in and they just say, oh, it's cheap to do it over there, I'll just do it.
I, I, I see, see, no field should be used for anything other than recreation, period. They, this, they, they grounds can use for, they wanna have a, you know, whatever, a, a. Yeah, they, the fairgrounds can be used, I wouldn't wanna see anyone using any recreational fields for anything other than that purpose.
And, and I guess my point is, we don't have that written here, so just, just say we put that bullet in there and then.
I would, I would budget, if I can find a way around that, that's your, your way in.
Or, or put fifty dollars and a hundred for the recreational fields, it's Como and Magnuson. Fifty for Kingston nonprofit and, and a hundred for non-Kingston nonprofit.
I would like to make a motion that we add a point under the fee schedule to state that all recreation fields are for.
Recreational.
Recreational activities only.
Yep. And TBD in those two blank spots.
And that, yeah.
And what about the select members, are they the right to alter any?
I, I second that.
Did you find that?
Yeah.
Ellie seconded that.
I thought I missed it.
Final approval for all events resides with the select board, so. Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Then we say we can alter the fees if we want to.
But, and this, yeah.
I think it's a, it's a determination, so.
Okay, cause so you think we're correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you got a motion to add the bullet points and the TBD, motion and second. You also had a motion and second to approve the procedures, and I don't think we voted on that.
We had a motion.
Right.
It was a motion, we'll consider you as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Add it all together?
Be friendly.
Yep.
Are you ready for a vote?
Can you read it back to us for listening public?
Um, uh, motion to approve the procedures as presented?
As amended.
As amended to include a bullet point, all recreation fields will be for recreation use only and to add TBD in the blank spaces on the fee schedule. Does that sound about right on?
Perfect.
Very good, very good.
Okay, roll call, both please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
And then, next up, we have the deployment flag decision, your timing is impeccable.
Well, Rick texted me, said not to show up, like, seven thirty, so. I was kinda thinking I showed up late, so if there was nobody in there, so.
And we got a list of military flags?
All right, now, the only, the only ones that, that can fly are the ones that show for military purposes. But, they show that there's only two flags for that.
But I think we can include this for military purposes.
I, I, what if we just leave it that, instead of getting into the whole loss of the leads, we allow the right for any military purpose flags to fly in town property? And leave it, so we're not going to that area, I agree with you, you're trying to do, but rather delve into it.
Military.
Is that a motion, Kevin?
It is. And allow it, and allow Mr. Garell's flag to fly until the troop is back on soil.
And that would be roughly.
Uh, well, they're saying a year, no more than four hundred days, so. They have to have their backup.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you work here, so, his son's deployed, and we did it at, at the fire station, um, one of our active firefighters was deployed, actually happened twice. So we flew the flag in his honor until he was back on, back.
So somebody complained?
No, 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 he, he, his son's deployed and he wants to fly.
I thought, I thought maybe it was flying and somebody complained about it.
No, no, he asked for permission.
Oh, okay.
So we went into, well, if we let you put a flag here, if anyone comes or wants a flag, we may, so we wanted to do some research.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, both please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
And I believe we're gonna use the new flag goal.
Yeah, Rick, at the, uh, St. Elia Recreation Center, Rich got it, we can.
Get it tomorrow?
Ellie, if you can let Rich know that that can fly tomorrow? Do you know anything else?
I did, I did.
The original lighting?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not available tomorrow morning, I won't be able to reach him till tomorrow afternoon. Just letting you know that.
I'll call Rich tomorrow.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry about that, guys, but I won't be back till about one o'clock tomorrow.
You know, they sell a nice round.
They do.
Solar, solar thing that shines down, that's a hundred and thirty bucks, that's unbelievable.
Cheap, cheap money.
If we can get.
Oh, we got bucket truck.
We got bucket truck at the top.
Where all these, times you are.
Oh, I just spent all my money.
Uh, and we'll get to that.
Yeah.
I gotta, you know, we gotta do this.
They did change a rule about lit flags at night, that's not required anymore, use for your requirement.
What is?
I think it's a good idea.
It is nice, I wanted to incorporate it with that, Greenwich Lab and everything else.
I bet one of the solar lights would light up the stone.
I think you're right, you have the round to go over the top.
All right, she's rolling up.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I have something just to leave with you, so. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, uh, Kevin, say hello to town owned land, you. Say it. This, uh. Count owned land, sale of. Property?
Sale, sale of dollar.
I haven't done anything with it at all, to be honest with you, so, I'm okay with it, I thought we had to, um, contact an auctioneer?
Well, we had to contact planning and conservation.
Well, actually, I take it back, we're waiting for planning board and conservation.
I haven't heard back from Glenn Greenwood, he was tasked with contacting the board.
I don't think we've had a meeting since that was sent to the board.
And you have one tomorrow.
We have one tomorrow, unless it's canceled, maybe canceled, we'll saddle up, postpone it, yeah.
And I did hear back from conservation, they didn't have any comment, I, I.
Wow, where's your shop face?
Well, the engineer took full responsibility, Charlie again.
So, it's kind of, but I did wanna contact at least the four property owners in Great Park and just let know what our cap was, cause it's different than what I originally talked to them.
Uh, so we do have some assessed values here?
Yeah.
For your viewing pleasure?
I got a question.
Totally inconsistent.
Just take the top lot, for example, thirteen seven, are we saying we're gonna get an auctioneer to auction it off, or are we gonna take closed bids? I mean, we, I'm on a couple of bid sites for land, and typically what they do is they post it valued at thirteen seven, lowest bid accepted, and sometimes it's a dollar and sometimes it's thirteen seven. But, that way we wouldn't give it a, a.
We, we, you must have, might not been here, we talked.
We discussed that at a reserve, like a minimum amount that we would get for.
Right.
I don't think we established a number on that, but we're waiting here back for the assessment.
Well, something came in and we just said.
I was here for that.
You weren't here, I was here? Well, I, I thought, cause we weren't gonna open up, well, actually, we did say, if someone wants to come off the street and buy an unbilledable lot.
That was his feeling, was that it should be auctioned off on the town steps, because you could get a lot, much better price. But I think what we were saying was that in some cases, you wanted to go to the butter.
Well, it's.
Well, he said that you just can't do that, you have to, you have to.
Excellent.
Yeah.
But we have to purposely put it there, that it's a non-builable lot.
I, I think, I think. No one's gonna come buy an unbuilable lot, I really don't, it's gonna be the your butters only. You know, we advertise it to our due diligence, whoever comes, counts, but we make sure that your butters know and they count. Uh. Yeah, I, then it's fair, because, I don't know, I think silent bid, I think it's better to just sue the auctioneer, down with it.
Yeah, except we're gonna pay him probably twenty percent.
That's, I think, where the, we were gonna research the, the fees associated with an auctioneer and make sure that that part of it was covered for us, so we weren't losing money, I think that was also the reserve, right?
Right, there you go, exactly, so it don't cost us anything.
Uh, I, I, I have to agree with some, I mean, it just, it's, it's completely fair, and, and I think the thing we need to do is how do we attach it to the deed or whatever, that this is not unbuilable?
Right.
And, and that's probably the biggest thing to be doing, research, we have to create a deed for this lot of land. And we have to add a survey, that, okay, so now it's not gonna be that, so, the auctioneer's fee, the survey costs, and then the deed costs is what we needed to have in the reserve, and that's gonna be.
Three hundred dollars if we get anything above our cost, then we're gonna be collecting tax dollars, which we're not doing now, so.
But, but there is, there's gonna be a sizable slot, a, a sizable cost associated with what we need to do to prepare those lots.
So I guess, who does the research if there is a deed or isn't a deed?
Engineer, uh.
So we have to have Dennis.
So Dennis would, would, would research the deed and he will let us know if it's a problem.
All right, so I guess, I'll talk to Dennis about these parcels right here.
Oh, he's gonna just research it first, cause he's gotta survey it, and he usually goes by what deed is available. I would think that's what he's done for us in the past.
And this is excluding that low point that Rich wanted?
Correct, we won't, we won't be auctioning that off.
I, I think this is a good test case, one, it, it removes a lot of liability from our plate, but it also, we can kinda see how this works and go from there, cause there's a lot more stuff in town that we can liquidate.
So I'll contact Dennis, I'll contact the land owners, and we're just working on Great Park right now, we still gotta wait the plan for the conservation, but at least we can get the ball rolling now.
The other one had some kind of a, a deed restriction on it, is that what I understand?
Which probably, oh, the other one, yeah, that, we're gonna, that is, we're still gonna wait the planning board to see how that was deeded, if it's deeded to the town or not deeded, or whatever, whether it's a community playground or whatever, and, yeah. That was gonna take a little more research.
Okay, good with that? All right, new business, discretionary barn preservation, Eastman.
My duty information is to look over, I did have one application, then a little appearing on April fifth, I think it is, and at that meeting, I had another person that picked up an application. So, uh, we'll wait until Wednesday to see if that one comes back, and then I'll publish the, make the paper, notice in the paper, but I just wanted you to know they were coming and remember how the process goes.
There'll probably be another one coming in.
Okay.
So the deadline on that is April first. And we wanna.
Want me to wait?
I would say, yeah, it's what we did last time, is we went through all of them.
Yeah.
We did a site visit at all at the same time, so I think we should give it a full timeline.
Has this gone to heritage?
Yes.
It came from heritage, I think.
Well, some of the, they gave them, but I sent the one application to the county as well.
I think, I know us three are pretty familiar with all the ins and outs of this one, given legal activity on said preservation. Yeah.
So I'll wait till the thirty first, and take everything together except the hearing after that.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably the most efficient way to do it, is, we'll set all these dates and then inevitably someone will come in that day. Good with that, Ellie?
Yep, I do, I am.
All right, uh, next up, the code enforcement officer, George, uh, that did pass, I think you supported that, um.
We review this and talk about it next time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, I have a bunch of red lines on that, that I started and I didn't finish, so, I'd like everybody to take a look at it, kinda, I think more than anything, we wanna make sure we just kinda encapsulate what we expect of this position and timeline.
On, on the, um, on the advertisement, Phil?
Yes.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure we wanna put in the salary and it's yada, yada, normally, you would say something like salary commensurate with experience minimum, you know, if you have a ten year requirement of experience, it's gotta be at least fifty thousand. But to get into the, the nuts and bolts and your salary plus benefits, whether it's nine months or six months, we don't know how long it's gonna take us to, to, um, you know, find the right person. So, I would, I would suggest putting a salary commensurate with experience, salary plus benefits, a full benefit package, cause we do offer a full benefit package. Just a suggestion, you guys know better about some of this stuff than I do, but.
Yeah, so, I also would like to make this as public as possible, so that people who had concerns about addressing residential issues and things like that, and know that they're being listened to on that, you know. I don't wanna drag it out forever, but I would like to make it where people can have input on it.
So we should post this on, on our site as well?
When you're ready to post, yeah.
All right, uh, committee liaison reports. Fire station, can that be rolling on, I mean, last week, uh, I heard you guys got all your bids, but you gotta look this. Is everybody ready to move forward, um, set the process for any bills that need to be paid based upon discussion before? Uh, let's see, what's on the line?
I'll get you to speak up, please.
She can't hear you.
Please speak up, chief.
Hello, I, I just met with the fire department, took all the grains, uh, review, as we all know, our fire team's house caught on fire last week. As we all know, our fire team's house caught on fire last week, uh, pretty much a total loss anyways. Uh, he's going through with that and I just informed him that he had the full support of the board of selectmen and to keep in mind his first priority. It does have to be his family, but I can tell you, he's been at work every day and going through stuff, so I just told him to just make sure that, you know, he takes care of priorities.
There is a real one on the page.
I didn't see that.
I'm looking up and putting it up at the end of the...
Uh, quote committee, I talked to you probably in December or November about money. Uh, they're to the point, they're gonna need some money, they're gonna make a down payment on publishing the book. And then once they receive it, another payment, and I think we agree, we're gonna take that at Kingston Days and then pay it back to Kingston Days. Uh, if I remember right, it's like eight thousand dollars down and then eight thousand at the time of receiving it. There's some publishing costs, publishing costs went up over the red, originalized one because they asked for five hundred pages. The book is roughly seven hundred and fifty. Um, it's about a hundred and fifty pre-sold, but that doesn't really scare me, because a lot of people are saying they're not gonna buy until it goes to press, which I don't blame them. We've talked about different things, like going and picking up the books instead of paying shipping and stuff like that, it just doesn't work out. I mean, we've gone through a lot of the figures, but there will be some deals come through that will need to be signed and probably moved pretty quickly not to, uh, delay the calls. If, one more thing, then you'd ask a question, if we sell seven hundred and fifty books, with what we're giving away out of that seven hundred and fifty, there should be close to a ten thousand dollar profit.
So my question is, uh, Kingston Days committee is planning to maybe hold Kingston Days?
They'll be in next week.
So, how much money will need to be borrowed out of, how much is in the account, how much will need to be borrowed from the account?
Well, I think sixteen thousand total that comes out, I'm doing that from memory and it's, my memory's not very good anymore, but it's not a tremendous amount. What I understand, they're gonna do a small Kingston Days for anything, so...
It was budgeted for, the book was budgeted for in the Kingston Days, okay, I'm almost positive.
Well, how much should they sell for ads? That's not covering the first run, they ads themselves?
There was a big down payment, I, I've got all that, I just didn't bring it.
Well, so saying, I thought, I understand there's gonna be, we might have to give them seed money, but it seems like we shouldn't, if they sold ads, that they have that money.
It's not ads, it's sponsorships, it was close, close to a ten thousand, I believe.
Okay, so then they, that's enough to pay the initial...
I think that's already covered, but the editor thing and the, uh, original, I mean, there's a lot of cost for that book. I can, I can get you the exact, actually, I might have it right here, a few equals...
Something doesn't, I, I hate to say it, but something doesn't jive, if they still need sixteen thousand, and if we sell the seven fifty, we're only, there's only gonna be seven fifty, a thousand dollars profit. Uh, you know, I get, we're not trying to sell it for profit, ten thousand profit, okay.
Big difference of a thousand and ten thousand.
I, I guess, we're not trying to sell it for a profit, but I don't, uh...
I mean, well, we're not, but that ten thousand's based on all the books selling and everything, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of risk in it.
Well, you looked that up, Rich, um, so, we had the, uh, T R C, we had two T R Cs for Cox Ridge.
Yep.
Uh, I did not make the last one, but I did, well, the one that I was at was very positive, and I think the last one went really well, I heard some good feedback. And I guess just the execution portion is what we gotta see, but hopefully that's, uh, moving on, we can put that to bed finally. Time, well, I hope spring's a turn up, um. As far as the inspectors, no major issues there that need to report to the board, um... Ellie, you got anything?
Uh, elections went real smoothly last week, that's a beautiful thing, we have a whole year's break. But that was it for me, except to say that I'm hoping that you and, uh, Kevin got some more in.
We did.
They did.
Okay, just checking.
That's a good segue, but I do wanna take a moment to thank all the people who, uh, worked the polls, volunteers there, the candidates who are running. But most of all, the people who could be bothered to come down and actually vote. It was a very, very, very poor turnout.
Yeah.
Well, the worst ever.
Probably the worst in the M S two.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But, uh, but thank you to everybody who did take the time to come down and vote. Uh, so that brings us to our board business of reorganization, which you do each year when there's an election, um... As far as committee assignments, chair, vice chair, and so... Who do you want to start? I would think that Kevin and I have both been vice chair, right? I would think, my opinion on, I don't think Rich or Ellie has been vice chair. So I would make a recommendation that either Rich Wilson or Ellie, uh, be pointed or elected to the position of vice chair, whoever would want that, I'm not sure. That would be my recommendation to spread it out to whoever may want it.
That was the vice chair?
Yes.
So you and Rich have the thumb wrestle?
Me and him.
Well...
Rich will probably win. It does, it, it's, it's whatever you guys want, I mean...
I guess my comment on that would be, this is my third year and it's her second year, so technically it'd make the most sense for me to take it this year and her to take it next year.
I nominate Rich Wilson as vice chair.
And I'll second that.
But you got three seconds there, so...
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call votes.
Alessio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, keep Phil Coons as chair.
I'll second that.
Second.
If he's willing.
He's getting out of there.
Doesn't have a choice, doesn't have a choice.
I see a line of people coming up.
Cool.
If no one else is interested, I, I would, I have a vested interest in seeing the code enforcement officer succeed, so that would be my primary focus as chair.
You, you've done a good job this year with some very difficult, uh, citizens of Kingston, and I, I think that you should be commended for that.
Most of all, you.
Yes, as colorful as I can be.
Ready for a vote?
Yep.
Alessio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Upstate.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
As far as committees, um, I'm now doing the book, which is coming to an end, heritage and planning board. That's it.
Who's doing H D C?
I've been doing it.
Okay. I, I would like to stay on the same two committees I'm on, because I'm three quarters of the way through the fire station building committee and I actually enjoy the conservation. I like your optimism on three quarters of the way through the fire station. Three quarters, we're getting broke ground in it. They wanna all of the planning, the planning.
Ellie, what do you have now for committees?
I have, uh, H D C, uh, I have highway, uh, which is not really meetings, and, um, I'm still doing zoning, obviously, but that's basically it. And I get liaised with the Tammy.
They keep in heritage, because they meet once a month, if that, and it's a...
Yeah, don't forget, we're gonna have the seminary building this year. You're gonna have to pay me to sit through some of those meetings.
We can't hear you.
The seminary building is coming through this year.
Yes, seminary building, gonna be more meetings, you say?
And long ones.
And long ones.
I'll be crying.
And historical, that's her.
H D C.
I mean, are we saying everybody's gonna keep what they have now?
I would request that we keep the same two that are now. I, 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 I think the continuity is good, and I think the decision that was made in the workshop today to switch the evaluations versus the committee assignments, I think is probably the smart choice, just so that there's...
Oh, good.
And I've been getting different eyes on evaluations and support as well, so...
And I know that the inspectors meeting puts a strain on you sometimes in prime parts of the year. But I will now be at those meetings on a regular basis, so if there's ever a time you had to miss, then I could fill in for that.
Well, I also feel that, you know, as we integrate the code enforcement officer, they're gonna be the primary person developing an agenda for that meeting.
It may be a few months, so...
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to change that now.
And I'll second that.
Can you have a motion that does nothing?
I tip, that is cool.
Same committee assignments.
Committee assignments remain the same.
Okay, motion second.
And we'll just do a roll call vote, did you understand that?
Okay, Alessio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
All in favor?
So the other thing is, um, you know, I, I, I think based on precedent, we've gone with any contracts need to be reviewed by legal and primax wherever applicable. I, rather than wasting the time in this meeting and add a week onto every single one, is, I would entertain a motion from the board to make that just the policy that Susan...
Yeah.
Do we wanna do it a dollar amount or any contract?
I'd say anything over five hundred dollars, so it's gonna be about any contract.
I think if somebody passed us to sign something for, you know, what's our petty cash amount?
I think it's five hundred, isn't it?
Yeah. I, I would say, if all of that should probably be reviewed by the board.
At the very least.
You know what, let, let's think, let's think of that a little bit. If we have a thousand dollar contract, we're gonna really spend the money, spend three hundred dollars for a legal opinion on it, really?
Risk is free, legal costs.
Right, that's what, that's what Ellie's saying too.
So...
Do we wanna spend a thousand dollars on something, we're gonna, you know, that's worth two hundred bucks, you know what I mean?
I think some things need to go to risk, not everything though needs to go to legal.
Okay, so how about everything on between five hundred and two thousand dollars goes to risk, anything above two thousand dollars is legal and risk.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good.
Ellie, did she do that?
Did you hear me, Ellie?
Yeah, anything over two thousand goes to legal, I, I still think it's excessive, we're gonna vote no. I mean, I'd go five thousand, I, I, I guess, I guess I would, I would rely on the chair, maybe even the vice chair. You guys think it really needs to go, then send it. For, to, for a, a review, but I, I'm really not in favor of making the lawyers that we work with wealthy.
Right, I'm with you on that.
We're gonna have a lot of contracts through that fire station, does that mean everything we do there is gonna be run through a lawyer now?
Well, I think those are signed by Bowen, not all the subcontractors.
Okay.
Yes, that's right.
Right.
So they work for Bowen, they, they all work for Bowen, all the subs.
Okay, so Bowen worries about that.
So it's between Bowen and the town, and all the subs work for Bowen?
I, I'm, I'm trying to think of what it would be, I mean, when we had, um... You know, the Bowen's contract went to the attorneys and primax, a lot of things go to them, but the process, I don't think it costs us, right?
What if we just let the chair decide, if he has a question, he can call the board. Rather than wait the week, I understand what you're trying to do, but if, if, if the chair decides something is, you know, innocuous and doesn't need review, bring it to the board. You set the agenda, if you feel it's something that you have a question on, either bring it before the board or call the board and say. I get me trying to do, not waste time, and that, I, that is my one, because especially if something will need a review, but I think the chair could have some flexibility.
I, I'm comfortable with that too, I am comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that too.
Okay.
So, does someone want to put that in a form of a motion? We'll leave it up to the discretion of the...
The chair.
To...
Whether contracts...
To legal counsel, uh, for bits. But anything above that goes out for risk.
Sure, I mean...
Again, I agree with Ellie, we don't wanna be spending all kinds of money to send something out, so I would think, you know, it's fair.
If you're not sure, pull the board, we have, we have a five person email with Susan on it, and she can record those votes as part of the record, that's all, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I would just, I would feel more comfortable with it if it, if we have a free service that reviews contracts for us, what's disutilizing across the board?
Yeah, model board. Yeah, I, I agree.
And then they...
Yeah, but you're also pretty careful on what you do and don't approve.
I try.
When you know the, as for...
When you read a contract, you know when it stops getting a legal jibe, you know, and it's like, oh, maybe this will go out, you know?
Okay.
So in that case, do you have a discretion to just send it somewhere, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
We could talk about liaisons before we leave this, or we can leave those out there?
It, it, we may want to monitor legal fees next, this coming year, just for shits and giggles, excuse my French.
Can't swear, just cause you're at home, Ellie.
Alright, so, Don, can you restate a motion, please?
I would make a motion that we leave it to the discretion of the chair to determine, uh, for legal purposes, what needs to go to attorney for, uh, bits, not bits, for, uh...
Contracts.
I have, I have no idea what he said.
The, uh, the motion is to leave it to the discretion of the chair to determine what contracts need to go out.
Good. Okay, I'm good with that.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, further discussion. Roll call vote.
Alessio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Upstate.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, you were saying it's...
Liaisons.
Um... I think that's worth switching out. Especially if we're gonna be moving the evaluations and then everybody having experience with...
I think this year...
Someone more experienced with weddings, wouldn't you like to make entries happy and maybe?
This year I was doing Don and this side of the building, so, only change size of the building.
Um...
I mean, who do we need to do, we need to do fire, police?
Highway.
Highway.
Why, he's a clerk.
And, and, and admin, not admin, but finance.
With, with Paul.
Well...
Recreation.
Oh, recreation, well, that's what I was doing, I was doing this side of the building, Ellie was doing this side of the building.
Okay.
So...
Why don't you get out of it, Ellie?
Do you wanna flip flop Ellie and I, somebody else won't ridge, I mean, I don't really care. Phil's had ridge, Ellie's had ridge, so somebody else should take ridge. I don't think you wanna do it.
I'll take ridge.
Whatever the board, whatever the board wants me to do.
Alright.
You're police already?
I did police this past year.
I'll take fire.
I don't mind keeping it.
I'll take fire, I'll be the liaison, I'll be fire's liaison.
Ellie, you want police or finance, or rap?
Doesn't matter to me, whatever you wanna give me. That's for the evaluations, correct?
Well, I shouldn't take this side again if we're trying to change.
Oh, we're changing, we're changing liaisons, I thought we were leaving them the same.
No, so the committee assignments are staying the same, but the liaisons...
Oh, oh, oh.
Are changing.
Okay.
How, how, what if I take ridge and mobile? Okay, I'll take police.
Okay.
So what's left?
I'll take Tammy. And then gives Ellie that side of the building.
I, I don't know what's left.
So what's, what's Ellie got then?
Ellie has finance. And assessor or whatever, you know.
Well...
She got me. Me and you.
And Phil, Phil's gonna be under, I mean, Susan's gonna be under you because of... And Phil, Phil's gonna be under, I mean, Susan's gonna be under you because of your weekly meeting, okay? And inspectors are under you.
But I think, uh, do you want assessing, Ellie? I do think that needs someone reporting directly there to manage that just because.
Yeah, and assessing. Is that Tori?
Well, I mean, Susan.
You tell me, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you guys tell me to do. You get one shot at that.
I know, I wanna use the poison.
Yeah, think about it. You don't have to give me an answer tonight.
Um, I mean, they're good calls.
Right now liaisons, I have Rich, St. Helair and Tammy. And Rebecca, really.
So are you doing assessing, do you mean?
Are, are things running better there?
Yes.
We don't have George in here.
We don't have the same.
I was gonna say, Dawn, what about you and tax, uh, tax clerk, town, town tax clerk, clerk, and then Ellie does fire, she hasn't had it.
That's, that's right, that's great.
Cause you're on the fire station building committee and she can be in it.
Is that what Ellie?
So then what am I taking? You just took Tammy away.
I have no experience with the building committee, so I don't know if you want me to do that this year or next year.
So I'm just gonna Tammy and you just.
It's up to you, but.
Riggs. So highway?
Huh?
Highway.
I'll do highway. So you want me to take, Ellie's taking fire.
Yes.
So I'll do Tammy's side of the house. Have you worn your eraser out, Susan?
Yeah.
I know, I was trying to figure out.
I, I'm just trying to mix everybody up.
No, it's good, we need to.
So I got Paul Butler then, anything else?
Um, so finance.
Finance and Paul Butler?
Yes.
Okay.
Ellie had finance, but now that's Kevin.
So I'm gonna do town clerk, tax collector.
I'm gonna read these back to you.
And assessor.
And the assessor.
Assessing.
As you.
And I'm doing highway.
Who's got assessing?
Me.
Fire. Dawn. Okay. So what I've got here is highway is Richard. Uh, town clerk, tax collector is Dawn, police is Phil, fire is Ellie, finances Kevin, recreation is Kevin. I am under Phil and assessing as needed will be Dawn.
Who will have Ellen and who will have?
Ellen.
So we need, we need, uh, well, not so much plan, but we need, uh, health insurance or health and human services, we need Adam.
You only had one, right? You only had, so why don't you take that?
I can take Adam, Ellen. Okay. You guys did just so I have to deal with the stumps, right?
Hey, I was just threatening, cause I said I, I, I got it, I was gonna have to deal with it, but now you're gonna deal with it, so no.
I'll tell you what, I'll do human services. Um.
Do you really want more?
No, what I'm saying is, I, this is. Let's put this off till next week. I wanna have a comprehensive list of who we're doing, because I have all the inspectors doing. So I think that should probably, that would probably be a better fit for you because you'll be in all those meetings and you'll be able to see those guys in action and I can.
So you want me to take inspectors?
Yeah, but. Can we just postpone this till next week? I wanna get it, we're, we're all over the map here and I wanna make sure we get a comprehensive list of this and for.
Okay, do you want me to keep this list and give it to you to?
I'd like to make that list better, at all costs.
All right.
So we're gonna, I, I wanna take all the evaluations that we have to do and make sure we have someone assigned to.
Well, I think since we're postponing this, we should talk to Rich about the stumps.
That's fine, I'll, I'll talk to him.
I thought Ellie had to do it. How's she get out of it?
Maybe she's already done it. Ellie?
I can't.
She didn't hear you.
I know she did.
Flag dude.
The what?
I'll talk to both flag dude if you want.
Okay, so, all right, yeah.
All right. Yeah. I would just assume we have a spreadsheet with everything.
No, I, I find that, you know, you can kinda think about the amount of time each one takes, because it's not unfair for somebody to have one if it's like inspectors, it takes a lot of time.
No, and highway is, you know.
Time consuming, and it needs to be more time consuming as we're phasing and changing.
Yes. All right, so we make sure we get that over next week.
Yeah.
All right. How about comment?
Okay. Uh, actually before, I would just like to make a quick comment on the voting results. Uh, there was a lot that was, uh, on Facebook active fact. I think it was nice to see the tax impact, but it confused a lot of people, so I think maybe we should talk about that. I, I do like this piece of tape for that, I don't know, was it Cindy that did it?
Cindy, yes.
This breakdown was very helpful to explain where we're at, but the question would remain next year, like for the, it said four ninety-seven for the budget. Do we wanna keep it that way? Cause the school board only has the change in the budget, not the total budget.
Right.
So that might be something we wanna consider for next year. Uh, there was someone that threatened to, to put in a petition warrant out to remove our recommendation or the, and the budget committee, if someone else knew if they wanted to do that.
I thought that was required.
That was something that went to the voters last time, wasn't it?
No, the tax impact, the recommendation might be, but they, it can be rescinded if, by the rule of the vote.
Okay, what, what they're saying is they don't like a recommendation by the budget committee and the selectmen because they think it sways people with unfair bias.
Well, that was the exact argument that people put because they want it.
Yeah.
They wanted the opinion study.
I mean, we're talking about not a lot of people.
Personally, I don't see how you take the budget committee's recommendation on it, because the other ones had half the power to set the budget and you wouldn't know unless you voted those meetings. So, and, but that's they can deal with, you know, but.
Am I confusing, because I think it was planning board, they just had the planning board recommend this and it did that breakdown and they changed one of the arguments this year ago.
In, in the past, planning board was the only one that had that. And then with time, the law states that the, the budget committee and I believe the selectmen have to put recommend or not recommend. The difference was, I think we added the votes this year. The third thing that Mrs. Maida, Sandy Maida referred to was the tax impact. She made a good, what I thought was a good suggestion, we should do the same thing that the school does, which they've been doing it for a number of years, and that is, put in what the increase would be, not the, not the base budget, but if the budget's up two percent, what does that two percent represent on the tax rate?
So keep it consistent with what.
That's the suggestion. Now, we, we have to put the recommend or not recommend, that's by statute, I believe.
I, I think that helped us being on there.
Awesome.
People looked at it and said, nine cents, that doesn't sound like any money, but it is, you know?
I, I think what Ellie's point is, is we are required to say whether the board supports it or not, and the reason the breakdown happened is because planning board had the discussion and so the people who were postponing it was making it look like everybody was in lockstep and saying this is a great thing. So I think that's why the, the, the number, you know, supported five zero or three to two or whatever it is, it tells people.
I, I like that being on there, I mean, because it, it lets you know that there's some debate and that we're not just.
I don't think we sway anyone because the SOBRA passed really with no issues and that was a four to one against.
Everything passed except.
So, except for the budget because people were confused on that four ninety-seven, because we should do like the school does and the increase, not the total, just the increase.
I'll make an exception that we will follow the school fiscally on this one thing, but.
There you go. Um, but other than that.
I have the record, Susan. I want that in the minutes.
I wanna ask this, can we engage Susan to contact Affinity Light? Because that passed, so let's get that contract back, because it has to be reworked, we're not, we're paying for it outright, we're not doing the findings and so with the contract, if you redone, so if you wanna contact Steve Lieber.
We've already been talking to them.
I did notice that, state lights that they're putting out, putting out any lights.
All right.
Uh, while you're talking about lighting, would everybody sometime at night, between now and the next meeting, drive by the storage facility?
I don't need to, I can see it from my house today once. So I gave, I did give that information to, uh, I mean, I was asked to look into that back way back when.
Yeah, well, she brought it up, so it's some of the others to me and I, I've got all the things that were on the approval. Everything's supposed to be turned off by nine, or by eleven.
By eleven.
Except for low-level security lights.
So when I talked to the owner, uh, a few months ago, he thought it was one, so maybe just a quick.
It's eleven, that's what it is on his plan and that he has to stick to the lighting ordinance, which he's not now because his light is filling way over his property line.
So then it's gonna take probably a letter from.
Um.
Or probably us.
I think I'll talk to him first instead of a letter, just say, you gotta turn the lights down, because one thing we're not doing that we need to talk about in the future is that, we put these things into their plans, but then no one checks to make sure that they put in what they say they're gonna put in.
That's where the code enforcement will come in.
Yeah, it will, but, uh, you know, that's happened several times and even with historical district, they'll make recommendations on plan or requirements and then they, they won't do it, but no one will say, you didn't do it, so.
I feel better. So we received, we received a complaint on this, correct?
Several.
From residents?
Yeah.
I, I got one from conservation.
Little bump.
And I guess if you wanna reach out to them first, but I think typically how it goes is good for planning. Yeah, it's a site plan, if you, it would typically be a letter from the planning board to the avenue or to the owner.
Actually, it would be a letter, planning board to us and then a letter.
Well, if, if they don't get satisfaction, because they typically reach out first to the person and then if they don't, if they don't get what they want, they.
Okay, I, I've been reading the state guidelines or complaints and they recommend a friendly conversation before any letters go out.
Okay, yeah.
I just say a lot of times it solves things before it gets to the home.
I'd be interested to see that recommendation from them as well, if you could send that my way, cause I, I'd be interested in reading that, and I think we should codify that in our procedures, because it's always kinda like, wow, when people call on the select board, it's disjointed. A lot of it gets rezoned, like go up to visit, like, we're very cooperative. Your hand on your guy multiple.
Yeah.
Puts out the bullet in his pocket, yeah. All right, um, anything else for board business or?
Um, yours is going by, I'm gonna, I got one person here, I'm not sure why it is here, do you want to do?
I want to progress.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we're that's what, so correspondence. Is there correspondence hold?
Uh, there's nothing really in it. It was just that one, uh, application that we're not dealing with yet, but the provisions are.
Correct.
So originally, we're talking about planning board tomorrow night, so we're gonna talk about the land body.
What about the, uh, wedding that they just had?
Yeah.
Um, you're waiting to.
Any recommendations?
Do I need an answer now, should I go and ask?
The disclaimers use forms, which you just did, so.
Just, we were just looking for the, if they give out blessing, blessings off.
You should have told the manager, hold the record in that one.
Did that, uh, that application for the wedding?
Is it in the orange folder somewhere?
Right there.
What, what about the King's Landing letter?
Oh, about the, uh, oh, yeah.
No, I can't.
Residency requirement, that might need to be a non-public discussion, I don't know.
Is that the person?
That was a kind of information because they're going through their association, but they wanted you to be aware.
Okay, oh, so that was an FYI, okay.
Yeah.
I think you got, uh, you must have a little bit.
Yeah, one.
We still have to prove the minutes.
Thanks. Yeah. I think a lot of you, but we're still in the meeting, we're on. Okay, King. Okay.
I didn't see where you had to do anything with that, they're just notifying you.
Yeah.
About land, so.
That's your correspondence, I apologize.
Board is supposed to do the, uh.
All right, I see a second holder to conference board, conservation. Uh, while we're looking at that, we, uh, said, we have, we said, uh, did a motion on the minutes?
Okay.
The, the, um, minutes on March first, twenty twenty-one, both public and non-public.
Second.
Second.
They are meeting, they are meeting tomorrow night because, um, they have to continue the hearing and we have a lot of correspondence to hold, so I'll bring up the land.
You can only have two for a.
Motion in a second on the minutes, do you wanna vote on that?
Me.
Alessio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, do we have issues for non-public?
I don't.
No. Okay. Ellie, you got anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, good luck tomorrow.
Both.
That will conclude the televised course or conclude the meeting for this evening. Thanks for joining us.
Do we have no non-public?
No non-public.
No non-public.